People on the island this weekend. That fire was, that was scary. Really scary.
All right, now we're good. Keith, you can go ahead.
Well, there's no need to use that demanding tone with me. I was preparing.
Good evening, everybody. Calls me to the New Shore Town Council to order. Today's Tuesday, June 17th. It is 6:33. Our first order of business tonight involves the town manager, contract negotiations, job performance, et cetera. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those no, yes, have it. We have to go into closed for about, well, no later than seven because we'll reconvene.
Great, that's a great approach. Okay.
Yeesha. Fantastic. Hi, everybody. Sorry that closed session took so long, but it was important. And no votes were taken during the closed session. Can I have a motion to seal the minutes?
So vote.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those no, the ayes have it. Now we get to do one of the truly joyful things, which is to swear in Phil Trudell. One of the things that struck me, and Paul and I talked about it, and I think other members did as well, about one of my favorite moments on the council was when we swore Paul Deen in as chief. And his kids were here, just like they were when he was first sworn in. I've known you for several years now, Phil, worked with you. I could not be happier that you've made this commitment to us. One of the things that always struck me about you is how committed you were to making a life on the island, and the fact that we've been able to make that happen, thanks to your commitment. Really, I hope remains a model for the town. And I just want to thank you, and I know others do as well, but it's a really... Most of the time you're doing this job, you don't get to experience, you know, real joy, and this is a great joy. Get that baby in those pictures.
You can come up to your.
I state your name. That's always my favorite, favorite part of that.
I, Philip Trudell.
I, Philip Trudell.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
and impartially discharge.
and impartially discharge.
the duty of the office.
the duty of the office.
of police officer of New Shoreham.
of police officer of New Shoreham.
according to the best of my abilities.
according to the best of my abilities.
and that I will support the charter.
and that I will support the charter.
granted to New Shoreham in sixteen seventy-two.
granted to New Shoreham in sixteen seventy-two.
the home rule charter of the town.
the home rule charter of the town.
the constitution and the laws of the state.
the constitution and the laws of the state.
and the constitution of the United States.
and the constitution of the United States.
so help me God.
so help me God. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that half the boat just slipped out.
He really did. And I give Mary Ann some credit for this. He really wanted to stay on the island, and Mary Ann really worked hard to sort of figure out a way for him to cobble, you know, living together. It was very, it was, it's a really one. And he's a.
Oh, yeah.
really big. Well, it's all downhill from here, everybody. Can I have a motion to convene the Board of License Commissioners, please? Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. These are, for people who are not familiar with our process, there is a liquor license that is governed by state law called an F-1 license. And the F-1 license entitles, you can get up to, how many a year, Keisha?
Twelve.
Twelve a year?
Twelve.
Yeah, but they're for particular dates. And we have two of those F-1 applications here tonight. The first being the Full Moon Party at the Southeast Lighthouse, Plaid Eight Lot One. Does anybody, come, 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 come. You know how this works, for crying out loud. Can you just walk us through it, Lisa?
Thank you. Okay, so the Southeast Light is planning a fundraising event on August ninth from six to nine P M. We will be sort of selling tickets in advance. It will be sort of beer, wine, and nibbles. We will also have a silent auction. Right now, there's no plan for any music. Even if we did have music, it would not be amplified in any way. It would just be sort of in the background. It'll be over by nine P M. We plan, there are some porta-johns sponsored by the town on the property already. We probably will get a couple of extra ones. What else? Oh, as far as the beer and wine service, we'll have tips, certified people, probably just two and one, one bar in a tent.
And you're going to be using wristbands?
Yes, and at the gate, we'll have wristbands for actually everyone. Ticket holders and ticket holders who are under the age of twenty-one.
Gotcha.
It's not being billed as a family event. It's more like an evening cocktail party to view the moonrise and raise some money for the lighthouse. Yeah.
Question. Are you charging for the drinks or is that a?
No, yeah.
And will there be someone at the, you said there's going to be someone at the gate?
Yeah.
Will they be there through the whole event?
Yeah, and we'll also have people parking, helping with parking, and yes, they'll be there as people are exiting, making sure no drinks leave the. And as you all know, we have that ugly gate to sort of control people.
It's developing charm over time.
Well. I think, I don't think the crowd that you're looking to attract is going to be bringing in coolers or outside alcohol, but I just want to state, for anybody else who might be looking for an F-1 license in the future, they.
Yeah, no, and they'd certainly be stopped.
No outside alcohol permitted.
Yeah, I was just about to, yeah, I was. Paul, we're talking about the fundraising event at Southeast Lighthouse, which has applied for an F-1 license that I think you've seen. Is that, they're going to do the protocols with the wristbands, et cetera. Can you, do you have any take on this?
Yes. What they did at the Concert Fest did work okay.
Okay.
And again, from the beginning, I've been saying this, do we need to keep having liquor at every single thing we do on Block Island?
Yeah.
Yep. Chief, I know you weren't in the room at the time. Lisa did say this was billed more, not more as a.
An adult.
Adult event, not so much a family event.
Yeah, yeah.
Last season, did we issue just Concert Fest, or did you have this function last year as well?
We did not, no. We haven't had a function like this in probably twenty years.
Twenty years?
Yeah.
Is this the first time we've applied, you've applied for a liquor license?
Um, no, I think even way back when, we applied for the appropriate license, yeah.
No, I guess, I'll make a motion to give the F-1 liquor license for the Full Moon Party for Plaid Eight Lot One on August ninth, six to nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 No.
Opposed, no. It's four to one. You're all set.
And thank you for waiving our event license.
Oh, yeah. Do we have to do that by motion, or is that just to give?
We've already done that.
We have, okay.
Next, we have six F-1 liquor licenses for Persephone's Kitchen, July second, excuse me, July tenth, July seventeenth, July twenty-fourth, July thirty-first, August seventh, August thirteenth. Sir? One up. Just identify yourself and make sure the microphone's turned on.
Is it on? My name is Kaylee Bernier, and I'm here representing Persephone's Kitchen. We've applied for this license the last two years, and it's select cocktails and mocktails for our dessert nights, which is part of the Thursday Night on Dodge Street event that happens every year.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start this off and make Paul smile, because I don't, I don't think this is an appropriate license or a necessary license for Persephone's. An F-1 license is generally for a special event, like the one that was just here before. But for an existing business to want to provide alcohol on, you know, for six, six times, just to kind of enhance business, especially Persephone's, to me, doesn't make any sense. I mean, if you want to have alcohol, there's the National Hotel, there's the Surf Hotel, you know, there's the Red Bird. I know I'm probably alone in this, but I just, I think it's a backdoor approach to a liquor license, and it just doesn't seem to be, it's not the idea of an F-1.
So I, I just want to, not that I disagree with what you're saying, but I had, over the last two years, I did not call Departments of Business Regulations this year, because I've spoken to them the last two years about this. So in talking to them, they said, you know, if they, he was like, well, maybe they should apply for a liquor license if they're going to do this every year. And then, but we had the conversation of like, it's a seasonal location, it's six specific events, you know, that are really one event that happens six times with the Thursday Nights on Dodge. And I don't think, I mean, we haven't had, we haven't had any problems with this, have we? The only thing I would want to add, if we decide to approve this, is over time, F-1 is not a new license, right? However, there's the expansion of the F-1 license that Persephone's was the first one to apply after the expansion in it. Previously, an F-1 license could only be applied for by like a.
Operation.
You know, there's a lot of like veterans' clubs and.
Right.
You know, antlers' clubs and stuff around the, around the state. And that's who would apply for these in the past, right? And it wasn't open to just anybody to apply for. And then, and then that changed. And you guys applied pretty quickly after the change, which is why I called up there so many, so many times. So it is permissible this way, although I understand what you're saying, because they could do it the other way. They could apply for a liquor license. I actually like it better that it's limited to six particular times, and Persephone getting a liquor license and having cocktails every night, like, I like this better myself. But, but I do understand what you're saying. I guess that's all I wanted to really say. The F-1 did shift, and you guys are not in violation of it. But as we keep getting more of these, I think it's really important to have somebody at the door. So I think it would be very important to add, if this was approved, that someone be at the door to make sure no one's bringing in outside alcohol at all, like, nobody goes to the Red Bird and brings nips over with them, and that no one is leaving with their cocktail. So that's.
Would you like to make a motion and include that?
I, I don't think we're done with the discussion.
So in the past, we've had, just to make sure that no one left with it, all of our alcoholic beverages were served in glass, and there usually is a vendor right at the door that we've had a conversation with before, being like, flag this if you see somebody leaving with glass. We've honestly never experienced an issue with it, and the crowd that comes through is pretty tame. They never, we never really sell more than one drink to an individual. It's not that kind of a, an event.
So I think Nancy, and to a certain extent Molly, hit, hit on something that's, that's important to communicate, perhaps for you and Persephone to contemplate this fall, and that is, is this the right license? And is there a different license category? And because, because I do think, and I'll be frank, I hadn't really thought about it this way, but you know, we do an F-1 for Concert Fest. We just did a, an F-1 for, for Southeast, which are actual, you know, events, ticketed events, you know, which is a, which is a, which is, which is different. And I'm not. We do liquor licenses, and then I expunge all the categories. Probably expunge all the categories from my mind. But I, you know, I do wonder whether, you know, there is a category that, that, you know, would be more appropriate for, you know, specific dates. But that is not, you know, what, what we consider F-1s. This is, this is a policy conversation, Kaylee, I'm sorry, but, but guess what? It's what, we're what you're stuck with. So, you know, it just. I, I don't want to. You were the first that we did this with, if you recall.
Yeah.
And you remember when we first approved it, we approved them, I think, in, in, you know, in sort of, yeah, like, you know, three or two, or I can't remember, and then you had to come back, and we heard from, it wasn't Paul at that time, but we, you know, we heard, you know, how it was going. I have always, I've, I thought that that was, in a way, quite valuable, because it was sort of, if things went awry, it was, it was, you weren't going to get the next license, you know, which I liked. Some substance of what I've just spent five minutes on is nothing but my own regurgitation. Bill?
Can I hear from the chief first?
Yeah, of course.
My concerns, obviously you know them. I get the idea, and everyone wants to have the Thursday Nights on Dodge Street. I understand that. But now we have a coffee shop that wants to provide alcohol. Do we have certified servers? Where's your service area? Who is maintaining the entrance? The same stipulations that we put on every other one of these needs to be put on this one.
So.
And, and quite frankly, Keith, I like your idea of doing two or three.
Okay.
Not all of them.
Okay.
Because then if there is a problem, we can have a conversation about that. If there's not a problem, then it's a very quick, easy, two-minute conversation.
So Kaylee, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, I first ask my colleagues, but I, I think the points that Paul makes about, you know, you hear Lisa up here prepared, you know, the wristbands, the tips, sort of, sort of, all of that stuff. I think it would be helpful if you and Paul, or you and Persephone and Paul, would, would sit down and talk. We still have time before July tenth to, to do this. I, I would suggest that we hold it until you guys have had a chance to talk. Is that okay?
I'll let the voice in. I, this is difficult, because I think Persephone runs a good business, and I think that you serving the alcohol will do it responsibly. That's not my concern. My concern is that it's promoted as a family event that night down there, and I think Persephone is a wonderful place to go without alcohol from that, you know, from that end of it. So for me, it isn't whether you can be responsible doing it. I just feel like at some point, we just seem to give out liquor licenses, like, and it's not, not, you know, like I said, I think you're responsible from that end of it. But at some point, you know, out of one breath, we're looking at these great ads we see on TV with the Tourism Council about family-friendly and so forth. And then, you know, on the same token, you know, it seems like that we're doing liquor licenses, when I think that it could be a successful night without alcohol. And I think a lot of people, many people might like the fact that I can go somewhere. I can go somewhere with a reason from that end of it. So that's, that's what I'm, the battle fight, to be honest with you.
And it's not like promoted as like alcohol, come, we have drinks. It's very much that family-friendly cafe atmosphere that just has these offerings, you know, also. And the people that do come to those are families. And then you see, you know, the parents have one espresso martini while the kids have cake.
Right.
And it's a very like civilized, fun event. That's not alcohol first. I know a lot of events out here are. Like alcohol, come, drink. It's just, it's not that. And that's important to us, that everyone knows that it's not.
My feelings are no reflection on your ability. It's more on the, the concept of.
Absolutely.
What the chief is saying from that end of it. Cuz I think it can be, Thursday nights can be successful and I think it's almost a cocktail and go one end of the street to the other.
And I think if we were, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tristan.
No, I was just gonna say, as Keith articulately spoke, this really isn't the intended use of this license. So for that fact, I'm not in favor of it. Let's go around. And, and it's also peak season. This is every week during our busiest time.
Um, I, I guess, um, I, I was gonna say, I don't really have an issue with it if, as long as we follow the, the, the rules. Like people get wristbands when they come in, which, and there's one for under 21 and there's one for over 21. There's somebody at the door, the same requirements that we've sort of laid on top of everyone else. I would say I don't have an issue because this is, would be the third year and there have not been issues with it. However, I think we, for the, if we were to do it, consistency, right? We can't ask other people to do something that we wouldn't be asking each applicant to do. And then the other thing is, um, just as a reminder, if, if we were to approve this, part of that F license is that. Cumulatively, over the course of an entire year, you can only run the license for 19 hours. So that means each, i- i- if you had six, it would be three and a few minutes. Only, you know, three hours and um, you know, it, it would be like that, right? So like um, Concert Fest, who had like, kind of like an all-day thing, if they were to apply again, it would be whatever time they had.
Subtracted from nineteen.
Subtract it from the nineteen. So just something to keep in mind that this license has a lot of other quirky things about it.
I hate it when Molly comes with all that information.
And I, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with Persephone's. It's a great coffee house. I just think it should be a coffee house, you know, but that's where I sit.
And, and not to argue with the table, I think we just, we issued it once and then they came back and reapplied. So it's actually only the second year, correct?
No, this is the third year. And um, based on my understanding, this would be the correct license. There, there is no other license that would cover this event. And um, I mean technically, it is a special event and this is an event license that is issued to. Um, LLCs, corporations, sole proprietorships.
Yeah.
So it's not issued to just like the Southeast Lighthouse and Concert Fest and those kind of bodies. Um, so, so it is the appropriate license that, that they're applying for. And these are special events because Persephone's is a coffee shop that operates from seven to two. And this event is taking place.
Six to nine.
Six to nine. So these are, these are special events. So they, they're having.
Thank you, Fisha. That's very helpful.
So uh, back to uh what I was saying earlier. One of the things that I think got me over the, over the goal line on Concert Fest. Two years ago is, the conversation was very similar to what you're sensing now. And the council asked the applicant to sit down with the police chief. See whether there are particular things that would be helpful to do. This is not to presuppose where anybody would be on the license. But I, but I think you're getting a sense of the, of the way the wind is blowing here. Unless people would just like to act on this now.
I mean, I would be okay uh, uh, putting the first two to a vote because those dates are coming up. I, 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 but I don't know where anybody else stands on this. And, but. I don't disagree about speaking to the, I think, you know, like a, not an or, but an and, talking to the chief.
Chief, in the past, what's the crowd? Is it a busy event? Do you have detail work like this?
I, I've actually been to him a couple of times and I believe I saw him just over there once. And it's, and it's, and it's enjoyable. There's not a, you know, a real lot of people in and out of there. One, one of the nights I was there, it was really pretty busy. You know, and like I said, it's, but there's always potential, right? And there's potential, and there's potential for everything. And I understand that. But at what point are we going to stop doing this?
Yep.
Right? If it's an, if it's, was something that was alcohol free, what about the people that don't drink? That wanna go do something and not be around people that are drinking? I think there's just as many people there that aren't drinking as are drinking, to be honest with you.
Think of more.
For the record, I was having the hot brownie Sunday.
If there's more people drinking coffee, why do you need to have the liquor license?
Yeah.
That, that's kind of my point is, you know, if this is family-friendly, why do, why do you need to have it? Do you, is it, is it going to be that unsuccessful without being able to serve alcohol?
No, and I don't think that that was the incentive. I think it was just, you know, we have amazing coffee drinks. And amazing access to do cool cocktails, espresso martinis, mocktails. Even those are some of our big sellers that, well, it, it was never meant to be an alcohol-forward event and it's not.
Right. No, and, and I understand that. But like I said, what about the people out here that don't drink? That don't wanna be around people that are drinking and wanna go to a nice event?
I'll, I'll make the motion to deny this license. One reason in particular is just to support the police chief. In, in his thoughts on this and. Just for that.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. That would be in favor of denial. Uh, opposed, no? I'm a no.
No.
So three, two, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the Board of License Commissioners? Second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no? The ayes have it. Uh, public comment? Boy, jeez, we're halfway through our meeting. Is there any public comment tonight? No? Uh, consent agenda?
So I have, I, I have a couple of things that I'd like to pull off the consent agenda. B is the, the Curia Systems for the police ticketing and C is the uh, Lieber planners.
Okay. Uh, so, so.
I'm sorry, yeah, also um. Okay, one second. Okay, I'm good. I'm sorry.
D. Okay, so we would be voting, the consent calendar would be item six A, item six E, item six F. And item six G.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. All right, Curia Systems. Paul, I imagine you're gonna have to exercise your legs on this one too.
Well, yeah, I'm not, I, I'm not sure my question is, is for Paul so much as it might be for, for Amy. Because there's a whole bunch of things under this contract uh that have different prices. So, you know, it's $7,000 for a thousand tickets. How many tickets do we, do you do in a summer?
We, we are writing uh parking tickets depending upon the year between three and 500. And on the Warden's Court side, it's anywhere from 50 to 75 to 80.
So if you have the 7,000 and then you have the uh um. Train, 4,800 for training and there's different other pieces that you can pick up. What, what is the town intending to contract for that, you know, was the lump sum price?
So it, uh, for, in terms of the implementation costs, which are above and beyond the 7,000 annual. Is the 4,800 for the training, 250 on the data conversion? Um, I don't believe that we need the credit card reconciliation and I don't believe that we'll need the system administration. At least out of the gate.
Amy, what's the data conversion, uh, chief?
I believe that is going to take any existing tickets and load those into the system. So that you have a starting place that is not letting some of your old things linger.
Correct.
So, so we're talking this, so on the startup, the seven is like an R and D fee, right? Annual fee for the software each year. And that would include up to a thousand tickets. On the training, is that, it says 32 hours, chief. I, we had talked about this. Is that a like, like a train-the-train, a one-time thing? Or is that something we might have to do?
That, that's a one-time thing and I've actually talked to uh the president of that company. We're gonna do 16 hours at $3,000 on the training. It's, that part of it is on the administration end of how to run the entire app. And it's gonna be myself and Beth Russo who are gonna be doing that. So we, we are able to take and knock down a, a fair bit of that price.
So this uh, so what will happen to this? This isn't, this isn't collections. This is basically allows you to scan. Uh, I'll put data into a handheld, some type of device, print out a ticket. And then if I wanna pay that ticket, I can pay that online?
Correct.
Correct. And then um, if I don't pay that ticket, what's the process that happens? So do they just notify you? What's the process from that end of it?
We, we, you mean an unpaid ticket that you are trying to get around? They, we can run a report every month and that's part of. The good of this is that in the past, when at the end of every month, Beth is doing it by hand, looking at every single line. This allows you to push a couple buttons and it spits out a report of what is uh delinquent. And at that point, when they're delinquent, we have the option through the Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal to write parties to offenses. And give them a Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal court date. And then they have to go to Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal and the judge tells them they need to pay it.
So an unpaid parking ticket, basically, you can kick it over to the tribunal?
Correct. Correct.
You know, the, 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 obviously the concern comes down to how many tickets do we write? Does it cost efficient from that end of it? Is there a possibility for this to be expanded to the Harvest Department?
There is because in the municipal end of it, um, they have what it's called a municipal summons. So when we write a Warden's Court summons instead of handwriting the Warden's Court summons, we do it through the municipal side on a mu- municipal summons. So we put in the mopeds with no helmets, mopeds on dirt roads, open containers, drinking on the beach. You can also add, you can add whatever you want into that on the town side. So we could at some point do this, the same thing in the Harvest for clamming violations or any other violations.
An ordinance is an ordinance, so it doesn't matter whether it's a harvest. And I think Keith probably writes a substantial amount of MVP tickets in the, in the Harvest.
A li- a little bit like the police, it depends on the year. Their goal is not to write tickets.
Sure.
But what is sometimes challenging is when they do write them, it's generally a pretty serious offense. That we want to make sure makes its way entirely through the process. And because there's so much um, manual handling on our end, it's not always as effective as we want it to be. So on the Harbor side, I think it's less the volume and more the critical nature of the ones that we do issue.
So I understand that, just like with, the chief has a major car accident, whatever. But there are, I know there are a number of things like tying up on the dinghy dock, clamming some of those things. I'm just thinking of other ways.
Yeah.
Cuz the numbers are high, I'm thinking of other ways. So we have a thousand tickets that are built into it and no cost that we can maximize that. So like I said, on that dinghy dock, she writes a bunch of tickets. That's, that type of thing might be able to.
Does this, does this make it?
There are ways we can expand it, yeah.
Does this uh, make it uh easier slash less burdensome to actually write tickets?
Yeah, because it's, well, I mean, for the younger kids, absolutely, cuz they're just pushing a couple of buttons instead of those of us that write.
So I sort of view this, when I was, when I was looking at the contract, as uh, an investment in upgrading the whole system. You know, uh, as opposed to just being about parking tickets. Uh, and to me, that, that is uh, you know, better or worse, this is the direction everything's moving in.
Right. And you, you know, in terms of making this a little more automated and being able to do things through that application. Beth probably spends about 20 hours a week on parking tickets.
Wow. Wow.
And then when payments do come in, they are touched by finance and carried around in a way that, you know. The chief said, oh, four people on his end touch a ticket. And that is actually before it gets to the town hall side of processing.
Right.
And I think, I mean, I think I've brought this up in the past, that this is so disruptive for the dispatchers. So dispatchers have a really important job to do and what they don't need is people banging on the glass. Saying like, I've gotta pay my parking ticket, I have a ferry to catch. And that is what happens to them.
Right.
So it'd be, I think it'd be super to remove all that.
So, you know, and.
So in everyone's, I'm sorry, in everyone's opinion, the expense is worth um, the cost. I mean, the, the long-term.
Yes, and you're not gonna recover that through the tickets, you're gonna recover that through the reductive man hours.
Right.
Yeah. Now others, does this come with scanners or is that separate that?
Say that again?
You talk about them having scanners. Is that a separate purchase that has to be made?
There, yeah, there were the, the hardware that we need to run the application, um, the mobile devices and the printers. We also had, was able to stick that into the burn grant budget, uh, a large portion of these things. So you know, some of the hardware, we will have to purchase out of pocket. But a lot of that initial cost came, was being able to pay for the burn grant through the burn grant. So.
And some of this program working is being covered, the R and D fee was through the burn grant also?
Yes, and we'll make that decision sort of on, since the burn grant's pretty much an annual program. Whether we continue to cover this on an annual basis or shift things, things around.
I, I think, and a one thing to know is that, you know, it was a how much it can generate cover. I mean, ideally, cuz I felt this way about speeding, I mean, ideally, we wanna write no tickets. That could be the goal. Tickets, if we wanna raise revenue, we raise taxes. We shouldn't be, we don't wanna, the ultimate goal is that no tickets end up being written.
Right.
Unfortunately, that's not the way it works. But I think that um, um, the bigger thing for me is for those people that do receive a ticket. I think you're more apt to receive the payment of the person, go onto their phone online, go pay it that way as opposed to try to find, who can find it.
Yeah.
I, I just, I would like to see um, us expand that out the best we can. And like I said, if the, if the Harvest Department take advantage of that also. I think would be, I think would be beneficial.
And I, and just follow up on that. I, I see Vin McAlune's cab has a list of all the credit cards and the payment methods that he accepts. Venmo and all this stuff. I mean, do, are we at the point where people can pay that way or is that something to aim for?
Only through this system, not, this is a, this is our platform for introducing that. I wouldn't go as far as Venmo, but major credit cards, yes.
Okay, cool.
So I have a question though, um, I don't even, how much is a parking ticket right now?
$50.
Fifty-five oh. Um, I mean, if we found that, that we needed to raise the price of a parking ticket, are we able to do that at a later date? Okay.
And we just did that, I want to say two years ago, because, because we were at 20. And I literally had a guy every day for two weeks would, or get the entrance to Mosquito Beach. And he would get a ticket and he would come into the PD every single day and pay us $20. He goes, it's the best parking spot on all kinds. Cuz it wa- it wasn't cost prohibitive. So maybe at some point, think about that. But for right now, 50 is where we're at.
Okay.
So I, I'll make a motion to approve the uh, um, the contract or uh, the Curia Systems. But this is an example of why certain contracts probably shouldn't be on the consent agenda. Because we can, we can ask questions and we can, you know, make the public aware of what's going on too.
New discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no, ayes have it. Item C, authorize a contract extension with Libra planners.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions on this one, too. There's a price of eight hundred dollars for remote attendance. But is there an hourly rate on top of that for the people that are, that's?
That's a flat rate. And that's one of the few things that they amended in the price proposal was that attendance at the virtual meeting was six hundred in their initial contract. And they've asked for that to be increased to eight hundred. And that's based on the amount of time that they find that they're participating in those meetings.
And how about the monthly staff reports that talks about it? They're generated for each agenda item. Does the planning board retain the, the ability to say, we don't need reports on certain things, but on others?
Yep, that's still a collaborative effort between the planner, the land use administrator, and the chair of the planning board generally.
Okay. And does this price, the fifty thousand dollars, also cover working on updating the comp plan?
No, the comp plan's entirely separate and we're, we'll be issuing an R F Q for that shortly. We've had a couple of different proposals unsolicited. And so, again, that group of the land use officer, chair of the planning board and myself, decided that in order to be able to compare like products, we wanted to go through an R F Q process for the comp plan. I feel like you had a different question I didn't answer. Sorry.
No, I think that's, that, that answers my questions.
Amy, I had a quick question, just because I'm not familiar with this role. Is this like what Allison's job used to be?
Yes, so Allison Ring was the town planner for a long time. She stepped back from that role and we were able to bring in Libra planners after a pretty long search last fall. And so you've seen Peter Friedrichs from Libra a few times. He is the principal planner on the new Shoreham project. And obviously, that relationship is still building. It's one that takes a lot of time to build the underlying knowledge. But so far, all the parties are happy with the relationship.
So Allison, I think we had almost ninety thousand budgeted for that position at one time?
That's across planning and G I S.
Right. So does this, so does this kind of fit within what we had before budget-wise?
This fits within the fifty thousand dollar budget that we have for the planner side of that. Next month, you will have a contract extension for Allison for her G I S services. But those two are separating.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll make a move to authorize the contract extension with Libra planners.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Item D, authorize agreement with Scott Cattell for consulting services related to the public safety complex.
So Amy, just a couple of questions. How, how many meetings has the building committee had to date?
Roughly five.
Five. And then just on the, on the site itself, it has staff and yourself. Have we reviewed the deed? At the?
We have, it's been a couple of months for me. I might believe Mike reviewed it most recently, but we, we have had those conversations. Is there a particular item you have concerns about?
No, I'm just wondering, limitations on the site being coastal features and
Yeah, and that, that's why Mike looked at it most recently to understand any restrictions, particularly Negas Park and some of the private areas around there to make sure that we weren't encroaching on any of those.
So the park isn't considered part of it?
It is not, no.
And then I guess, so these funds, is this coming out of the grant funding?
So this comes out of the appropriation amount. That's the only authority we currently have around this project is the three point five million dollar federal appropriation.
So this, this contract will be paid for with those?
Yes.
And then additional, additional staff? We have, have we had, have we reviewed the current structure and the assessments? I mean, I know we have a file on the building somewhere.
Yes, so the committee spent some time looking at a number of the different designs and proposals that have been out there over the years. Taking the good, the bad, and the constraints of each of them. And as a committee have made some decisions about preferring a new building as opposed to a renovation of any of the existing facilities, but has not gone as far as bringing a design forward to the town council. I would expect that's probably the next step that would come to this body would be as we go out to an R F Q for architecture and design services. It would have a preliminary scope of work, sort of articulating what we're looking for as well as the needs assessment. And that's what we're engaging Scott to assist us in moving ahead with the needs assessment and drafting the R F Q.
I guess just my concern, it just seems, it just seemed a little bit quick. I was, I was hoping staff and stuff that we would get a little bit further. No doubt that we're going to have someone like this or a firm like this help us with this project. It just seems early to me right now.
I think one of the sensitivities of the committee is to the timing and not wanting to drag our feet.
Worried about the funds that have been appropriated? Is there a timeline on those?
There is not a timeline. And we have been reassured that they are there and available and not subject to any clawback. Is there always a concern in the back of our minds? Of course, because until you have the cash in hand, you don't have the cash in hand. But it's more the need of, the need of the building. We know we have equipment outside, we want to get it housed appropriately. And so that's really the pressure, the timeline to me is, is getting our equipment in the right spot.
Thank you. And, and he works under, Chief Cattell works at your direction, Amy, correct?
He does, yes.
So, so those hours all monitored through you anyways. And he also has done several fire stations.
Yes.
Built from that end of it, so.
Yep, and I, you know, he's been at a lot of our meetings, I think maybe four of the five. And I don't want to say it's been vetted, but has a good working relationship with all of the, the staff members that are on that committee, including chief of police, the fire chief, finance director, myself, director of public works, so.
I, I've tuned in on some of those meetings. I mean, he seems to be well aware of what the, what the needs are and how to go about it. And was it North Kingston where he just, he was just part of a, a fire station built out in North Kingston? So his, his knowledge is very recent.
And he's familiar with how that needs to work within a community, that you can have the greatest ideas in the world. But until it works for the entire community, even those who may not necessarily care about the fire station, it's not going to, it's not going to fly.
Can I have a motion to approve this contract with Scott Cattell?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
I was sort of, I had one question on F and I'll, it's too late to ask it.
No, go ahead.
That was, I guess, what up, yeah? I guess that's the clerk's office wants to charge a twenty-five dollar fee, correct? If, if someone takes a, let's take a cab, it gets broken down, they take a cab, they want to take it off and put another one on from that end of it. So for instance, I guess my first question is, does that happen often? And then the second follow-up to that would be, it's usually because somebody buys no cab or a cab breaks. Would that be correct?
Okay. My, my understanding is it's happening with more frequency, which is why they're feeling the need to recognize their time that's being committed to this. And I think it may be an additional convenience for some people, whether they're shifting vehicles. But it's not as isolated as it used to be and it does take a fair amount of time.
So it's, if, do you find it's being like someone has two cars, I'm going to use this one this week and that one next week? As opposed to, because my concern, I guess, is if someone's car breaks down and they have to take it off, and, and, and there's a, so they take it off and they have a rental, whatever. So they pay twenty-five, do they have to pay another twenty-five to put their car back on? Or is there, is there? I get what you're saying. If I have two cars, I'm flip-flopping, I get that, but.
I do believe as written, it is on both, it would be on both ends.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if, and I don't know how to catch it between the two, but if someone legitimately has a car breakdown and they got a loan that they're being used for a week and then bring it back on, is there a way that, that one fee would cover the both? That was.
We, we've already voted on this, Judy. We, we can ask when Millie gets back for a report.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get some clarification, but my sense is that, is that creep is what's happening?
Okay. If it's the, to that point, if, if it's someone flip-flopping back, well, they have no problem. My concern was just if someone legitimately has a car that's down, it's usually a hardship from that end of it, so. Thank you.
We have the same vacancies as we had last time. We have a good turnout today. Volunteer. Motor.
Look at the hands flying.
No, no, you are on consent. You're done. I'm pleased that, I'm pleased that you stayed, but. Item eight, discuss an act on letter from Block Island taxi owners Sue Ann Milliken and Kathy Payne requesting legislation to regulate shuttles and courtesy vehicles.
And Keith, I, I believe it's appropriate that I recuse myself. I operate one of these units.
Thank you, Tristan.
Thank you, Tristan.
So.
That's a good question.
I am going to recuse, but with the understanding that however this proceeds forward, I may not need to recuse in the future, so, but I'm going to recuse now.
Hold the phone, everybody, because we may need to postpone this. We're going to have to. So, so I didn't even think of that bill. I should have been aware, I should have thought about that, but I, but I, it's, it's very interesting when you talk to the, the state of the ethics commission because when you tell them you're from Block Island, they say, oh, sometimes we have to craft special rules for Block Island. And I honestly had forgotten that Bill has a bus license. So we're going to have to, and, and I don't know, Amy, whether this is best handled by James or Nick to sort of ask who, who's the least conflicted or, or, or how that works. Hey, Sue Ann.
So.
But I think they need to find, they need to determine who's least conflicted.
I spoke to them and, and about my own situation. And the recommendation I got was that the way that it is written right now, I should recuse. However, if it's addressed differently going forward, then I can get a decision from them. But based on this vagueness of this situation, they can't offer me an answer, a clear answer, because this is too, this doesn't have a direction.
Right, I actually think the really, the, you know, the potentially challenging question is whether Bill with a bus license also has to recuse. He probably should tonight, just to be safe, which means we don't have a quorum and.
Can I just ask one thing? Like I'm thinking, this isn't really so much a taxi issue. I mean, the taxis brought it up, but it's really more about just getting control or asking the town to help us get control of regulating the shuttles. It's not necessarily a taxi.
So I, I, and I, this is not me disagreeing with you. It is me saying that the way the ethics law works in Rhode Island, it's not my call. And Molly just shared with us that she spoke with ethics and ethics said you probably should recuse.
So on that, I'm going to recuse, but can I ask a procedural question? Our, how does it work with our, with our body if we're down to two people? If we started, I, I remember for the start with a quorum and we moved down or something. So if it's the two, can you, can you not go forward?
I don't, I don't think, Nancy and I certainly couldn't add.
Yeah, but.
Though we'd be happy.
I don't know if Nick does, but it's just, just a question.
Yeah, my understanding is that we cannot go forward with just two and there is a process for determining who is least conflicted. Nick, I don't know if you can shed any additional light.
Amy, that's, and we're going, we're going on the fly on this, but that's my understanding as well. I think it's the rule of necessity. I think Nancy, that might have been half out of Nancy's mouth. I think she's correct. It's been some time since I've reviewed that, so I would need to firm up on that, but I believe you're right.
So I just, I, I want to say Frank Sands, Kathy, Sue Ann, Judy, everybody's here. I'm really sorry. I, I, I didn't think of it until literally Bill said that. Molly did tell me earlier today that she had been in touch with ethics. I knew that Tristan was going to excuse, but I thought that, you know, I, I never thought about that. And I, I apologize. It'll be on our next agenda, we'll get this answered and we'll figure it out, okay? Sorry about that, guys.
It was nice to see you all.
Yes, it was good to see you.
I was feeling invigorated, David, really. It was not electronic, it was.
If, if that ever happens in the future, speak up right at the beginning and say, you know, could you adjust the volume?
Is there some indication that he would not speak up if he was here?
The Oscar.
Years of practice.
The Oscar for sound technique goes to Nancy Dodge.
All right, Mona. You're up.
Okay. So later on in the agenda, we'll be discussing our over and under expenditures. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on expenses here, except for particular questions you may have. And just remember, these financials are definitely in flux this time of year as we make a lot of year-end classifications and kind of do a deep review of all the ledger lines and making sure everything's where it should be. So we've even had some small changes that have occurred since this was even put out.
Okay.
So as far as revenues go, the town clerks, license permits, fees, it's really, looks, that's similar to where we were last year as far as like a percentage collected basis. So I don't have any concerns that we will meet our budgeted figure. Building permits, we've already met our budgeted amount and we still have June to collect. So we're going to see a surplus there. And then, of course, we have short-term rental, which is ninety-seven thousand four hundred dollars for year-to-date. And we'll still have June. I don't, I mean, in as fast as, you know, as heavy as it was, but the price still so trickling in. Other areas we were seeing.
So you think we'll meet our number? You think we'll meet, we will meet our revenue number?
For?
Yeah.
Which one? Just in general, the overall? Well, we'll discuss that when we go to, yeah. I do.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that revenue includes some different things like grant. Also. So also cemetery lots and fees that overall is over, exceeds the budgeted amount by twenty-eight thousand, so that's helping some of the unders. And let's, where else are rents? Coast Guard rent's already met its budget. We're going to pull in another five thousand for June. That's going to help offset that lack in the Thomas property rent. And I know. The number. Absolutely, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, and so just for reference, we were just referring to, and by the number, you mean the last four of the general ledger line? Yeah, yeah, four to two eighty Coast Guard rent, yeah, no problem. So that's where our overs and we have our under there Thomas property rent, we see that. The others are. Um, the others are, uh, either offset by related expense or a, an adjusting entry later. Uh, and then we have our police officer fines, so topic of conversation tonight. Uh, and we've already exceeded the budget there by four thousand, and I'm sure there'll be more in June. As far as sale tax goes, we, uh, the hotel tax, we still, again, I'm going to remind you that there's a two-month lag here, so what we're looking at is, uh, through March. So we still have another, uh, three months of revenue to bring in there.
Well, how does that compare to last year? You know, on the, the hotel tax? But in Washington, it's kind of hard.
I never, I, I stopped looking at that because what it has to do, it has nothing to do with actual sales that month. It's really about when people send in their, their payments and some people may have not sent in their, you know, tax payments for three months and then send it all in lump sum, so it's really.
So, so there'll be months that get skewed because you're getting it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, they, they give it to us, uh, as they receive it themselves and it's not necessarily directly tied to the sales that month.
I see.
Yeah, that's why I like looking more at like either a grand total or, you know, kind of a quarterly gives you a little bit better of an idea.
Right.
We're very similar to where we were in collections last year.
Yeah.
So that's helpful to see.
Yep.
And then, let's see, other than that, I don't really have much more to report. Like I said, we're talking about our over expenditures and how we're going to support those later on the agenda, but does the council have any questions on any lines in particular here?
Oh. Did you, did you, did you just ask for questions?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I oppose the question. Do we ever, have we gotten any reimbursement from the trust on any of the insurance claims for the, uh, fire alarm?
Not yet. They, they requested that we wait until the project's final and then we submit it in lump sum. And that just finished last week, that project? Yeah.
It was approved last week, right? So it's all set?
We have, we're waiting. Invoices coming in.
Yeah, there's still some lingering elements, both of the deployment and of the billing, but we're pretty close to having a, a final package.
Okay. Do we have a, a general number we're looking to get reimbursed on, hoping to get reimbursed on?
I know for this year, just this year's expenses, it's about, um, what was that? I'm sorry, I just moved that. It's one of those things that happen after these financials, um. Yeah, so the total, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand would be what we, just for this year, what we would have expected or what we've expended for that.
So our total project is, is about two, two twenty-five.
And so the, that we're going to be hopefully submitting for reimbursement?
Yep.
So, um, and that, this is all based off the lightning strike.
The original lightning strike.
Going back. Um, and do you have, have you gotten any sense that, that, any pushback on what's being submitted in or do you?
Again, they've asked us to hold everything and submit. Um, so the first initial batch that we that was direct expenses back in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Um, they did see those and that's where they said, okay, we are hearing that you need to replace this entire municipal alarm system as a result of this, that you've had a catastrophic failure. And we, we expect that all to be a reimbursable expense under this program. Go, go off and do. And so we're, based on that, we're expecting a full reimbursement. Now that said, we have a plan B in case.
Sure.
In case there is a problem, but, um, we're going to pursue down that path as they've represented, that those are all eligible expenses and the entire replacement that we've had to do goes back to that critical failure of the lightning strike.
Great. So you'll submit the two-something and then hopefully they'll sign off on it. If not, you'll, you'll pick through each one if there's an issue.
Yep.
Great.
And because they asked you to hold everything, there'll be no time delay or any issue with that at all.
There not be, no.
Okay, good, good. And the other question was at the, I'm not going to open a can of worms, but the Thomas house.
Yep.
Where are we in payments on the Thomas house?
Um, so I've got this one. Um, so what we've paid today is one point three five six million. And Nancy, I know you've seen the contracts and are familiar with those, but there were basically four stages of payment. And this was from Connecticut Valley's blueprint. Um, the first is initial plans, the second is preliminary deposit, the third primary payment is when they are set on the foundations, and then the fourth and final is substantial completion of porches and decks. And so we've released those first three stages. We're still holding the final stage, um, which is substantial completion. So, um, in total, that amount is about twenty-five thousand. Um, we still actually owe a little bit from the very first stage because we paid our blueprint deposit before the contracts were signed. So we're actually holding a little bit more than that, but, um, essentially that is that last final payment.
So you're comfortable, we're holding enough to keep this.
We're holding what we can under the contract.
Are you comfortable that's enough to get the project done?
Yeah, we can get the project done. Um. If you remember the HVAC, the plumbing, the electrical, those are all under the town's contracts, so they're not part of that. HVAC was there over the weekend. The electrician needs to come back so that the outside condensers can be hooked up. Once the AC is, and the HVAC is running for a week, they will deliver the stairs and the floor. Um, so that's their climate control procedure. So we expect all of that next week. Um, they're continuing to work on punch list items and so things are continuing to move ahead.
So when we talk about the one-point, that's for the entire project. Some of that portion goes to Connecticut Valley, some goes to the contractors we have?
No, the one points, the, well, the total contract amount is one point three nine. That is with Connecticut Valley. Our subs are on top of that.
On top of that?
Yep.
And we have, what we have budgeted, I know you've been pretty good about.
We are not going over the budget that we have.
So ballpark what we have. So the one point three nine with Connecticut Valley and then the additional on the subs was roughly a couple hundred thousand, is it?
Couple hundred thousand. We'll go with that.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, and we are holding, again.
Yeah, no, I know. You've been, you've mentioned that.
And at one point, there was a question about landscaping and whether the town would do it themselves at some point in time.
That is still the plan. Um, given where we are and where we are with staffing, we don't expect landscaping this summer. Um, you know, if we can get some seed down, great, but that's, that's not our our habitation-first link.
Doesn't need to be the focus right now. Yeah.
Put some of the stuff up there now. There's some big ruts enough. That can be filled in.
There's going to be grading.
Yeah, exactly.
Grading and driveways. Yep.
And we can do that internally.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mona on this item? All right, beautiful. Um, Amy, your report?
Great. Um, so staff has been extraordinarily busy. They will, they will all tell you that when you ask. So it's an abbreviated department level report. Um, but I did move some of the town manager items up ahead. So the first we touched on, which is the state fire marshal approval of the AES municipal fire alarm system. Um, we would not have gotten through that process without Howell Conant.
Yeah.
Who has been invaluable and, uh, really put in a huge amount of work and effort and attention to detail on that. Um, and he was supported by, uh, Chief Hobie, Chief Dean, Mike Shea and Tom Resum, and the team effort to get that done was really tremendous.
Impressive, yeah.
Um, one of those things we don't talk about often, but it happens in the background.
Yeah.
Um, we've done a Thomas update. The other element that I would add to that is we have sent out solicitations of interest for the manager's house. Um, so hopefully we'll have some action for the council at our next meeting on that, get, get that occupied.
And Amy, keep running down. So that, that solicitation on the pecking order for the manager's house, it goes to, again?
It's first, um, out to executive level for school, town, uh, which includes store and water and BIHS. And then the next level down would be department levels at those entities, so.
And that will come back to the council, correct?
Yes. Yep. Um, we also received approval for the hazard mitigation plan, uh, from FEMA, which is great. Uh, both FEMA and REMA, with a lot of compliments on the detail in that plan and how tailored it was to, to New Shoreham. And so, uh, appreciate everybody's efforts in getting that done. Um, there's a, a reminder there about the piping clover nests north of Scotch, south of Mansion. It does look like, uh, we may have eggs, which is exciting and hasn't happened in quite some time. If those continue to be viable, we'd be talking about potentially closing that area to vehicles north of Scotch. Um, if they hatch, so everyone can sort of emotionally and mentally prepare for that. Um, and a reminder to everyone to keep their dogs leashed, uh, so that we can hopefully get to that stage. I guess I'll pause there and see if anyone has questions.
I, the, uh, I was quite, uh, happy to see that, um, there's been a connection, uh, with the, between the rescue squad and, um, rural health, uh, clinic, clinics, because I know uh, there's a strong desire to bill for ambulance services, uh, and, uh, I'd always suspected that perhaps the rural designation might be a path and I'm hopeful about that. Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm waiting for the legislative bills.
Oh, do you? Well, I don't know what happened today. Um, uh, I do believe that there might have been some passage, we were expected some passage out of the, uh, um, Senate on some of those bills. The school bond construction was signed by the governor, so that is, has been fully enacted. There were some, uh, minor challenges at the last minute with the water district legislation, but all indications were that, that the remaining three bills were likely to make it out of the, um.
Sounded like that was a mis-draft issue.
Yes. Uh, and so Rick and Jeff were working through that. Um, it did sound like all three were likely to make it out of the, uh, full House and Senate, maybe as early as today.
And I was, I, I was happy to see that there's been some substantial pushback on the, uh, on their millionaire's tax. But I'm surprised that nobody's picking up on the fact that the property tax imposition is at the heart of that.
I, I think we're all surprised here. Um, and it, again, not knowing what's happened today, um, if that does stay in, we seem uniquely informed and concerned about the fact that that is a property tax that really undermines our local ability to, to, to create tax classification, which we've worked so hard to do. Um, and we can think about what next steps we, we may want to take, if any.
Amy, can, can you help me? I just don't understand the way the process works. Usually there's legislative bills that go in and then there's the budget bill, and we had talked about this a little bit. There's, there's a budget bill that includes this in it.
Mm-hmm.
So if the budget bill is passed, does this law automatically, it doesn't have to be passed through on the House and Senate side or?
It is enacted with the budget bill.
Budget.
Um, there was a possibility that there may, I mean, there, we knew there would be budget amendments, uh, today and probably tomorrow. Um, whether any of those amendments include, include changes or removal of this section uh, is what we are just in a waiting mode about.
So is there, is there, in the wind, that there was any legislation introduced or to the, to the budget to remove that?
Uh, it was a possible.
We don't know.
It was something that was possible, uh, when I checked in with, with Rick and Jeff yesterday, but I don't know if that was submitted today.
The problem, and, and I know that we know this because we talked about it, you know, it's being spun, oh, it's a millionaire's tax that only affects, you know, a Jay Leno or a Taylor Swift and so forth. The problem, I think Molly mentioned, if it's right, it's almost seventy percent of the homes out here that affects. And regardless of where the money's going, the bigger issue where people should be outraged is the fact that the state would be taxing your property. That door opened up. I don't care how small it is. That door opened up is, is, is a major, major issue. Um, secondly with it, I'm still extremely upset with our representative and our, and our, um, uh.
Senator.
Senator, that their names were on this bill. And we voiced it and Amy did a good job. I should have a letter up to the league. I'm not sure what their response back was because the League of Cities and Towns also.
They've been silent on it.
And they've been silent.
Since.
Their, their description that we all received, uh, I think we all received it on Sundays, right? Uh, didn't even include.
No.
Yes. I, I mean, I, I, it's astounding to me.
And their letter that they sent in support, or at least in, in mention of it, was so off the point.
Yeah.
You know, never even mentioned the property tax implication, uh, that the state was grabbing.
I'd like to, I'd like to see us have a meeting, talk with whoever, the head of the League of Cities and Town. I think that we need to follow through on this. I just think that, um, I know we can't control the ship that's, that's afloat up there already, but, um, this is, this is a major, major issue with our representation that we have up there. Um, I mean, that affects us greatly. I mean, I expect this to come out of the Tucket or, uh, Warwick where, you know, they, they don't have the homes, but for it to come out of our own representatives. And when we brought it up to them, I, I'd like to know had, have they, you know, they seemed surprised when we had said it to them and, and either weren't up to speed on it, but did they take any action after speaking with us at that end of it? Um, and I know, I guess when the, the budget, there weren't the hearings that they would have on the individual bill, so. Anyways, I'm frustrated, really frustrated. And I'll tell you, everyone in this town should be extremely concerned about it because you're talking seventy percent of the properties.
And I believe that number is the number of properties that are assessed over a million.
Right.
Um, again, it's a subset of that that are, um, not first residents.
Sure.
But it's still a major subset.
Yeah.
Um, so I think let's, I don't want to overstate, but it is a significant part of our population.
Right. So it's homes that are valued at over a million dollars but are also not owner occupied.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand, is it? Okay.
Yeah. And the definition of non-owner occupied is kind of nebulous, too. I'd be curious to see how they, you know, specifically do that.
If you rent out, according to the original language, unless it's been changed, if you rent the house out, then it is subject to that, to the tax. But the, the, the bigger issue, like I said, is, is the fact that this door that opens up because the state is in, you know, like everywhere, the financial crisis, you know, they're going to be looking for money from everywhere. And then, you know, oh, it's only two cents on gas tax. Well, it's only another percent on this. I think this precedent is really, really, really detrimental to our community.
I have a thoroughly esoteric issue, uh, or, or, uh, point to raise after that. Sorry, that's a much bigger issue. Um, when I was watching the news the other day, they were talking about another bill that was up that was not on my radar at all about making, um, driver's education remote. Um, or they, it was, remote could be a possibility. And I feel like that's something that we need to be one hundred percent behind. I mean, our, our students have the opportunity now, once a year, to take it in person on Block Island, which is fairly new. That was definitely not an option when my kids were doing it, but you know, we just have a lot of kids who like, if they, if you, if you haven't been, if your birth date's not by a certain date, you don't qualify, you can't take the class, and then you have to wait a whole year. That's a very big deal. When you're that age and you want your driver's license, and I think that, that we should be behind the effort to have that be an option.
Amy, can I ask one question? So our, our hand, our, our hands pretty much, and Keith, you may know this, our, our hands pretty much tied right now because it's the eleventh hour. They're, they're about to end session.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's, but what, when they go behind closed doors and cut a deal on the budget, the likelihood that it changes is pretty remote. Um, uh, I, I'm with you, Bill. The, the precedent makes my head explode. Uh, because, uh, uh, certainly us, but I think every coastal town now has their local budget decisions essentially crowded out potentially by what the state is doing. And it, it's just, it, it is, it is a really, really bad idea. You know, if you want to raise the income tax, raise the income tax. I don't, you know, you make those policy decisions, right? But to, to branch off, um, particularly in, in New England, I don't know about others, other parts of the country, but particularly in New England, uh, states have not crossed that line.
No, no, local property taxes were sacred. Local property taxes were sacrosanct. Set by and set by the towns.
It's very disconcerting and I found. The the League of Cities and Towns sort of silence on this. To be deafening to the point where I was sort of looking through the budget to see what we pay them in dues. It's kind of kooky. And it's, by the way, it's about twelve dollars.
You're not going to go out of business if we walk away. You know, that's always been the problem, but no, really.
So sad to see you.
But if it's only a percentage now, once the foot's in the door, you know they're going to be looking for money going forward. It's a it's a dangerous. Dangerous area to allow them in.
So the when does it close?
There were the house, I thought, I thought I read, yeah. That the house had called. Had called themselves in to begin the debate today at three thirty. So I don't know whether they've.
I I don't know what happened today. But it was this 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 week, essentially.
Yeah, because this this was all, I mean, this has just come out of the gate, a lot of the realtors and and they're all, you know, between this and the other tax, they've, this is kind of like a last. It was on all the all the the talk shows and it was also on the. On the. The Saturday morning talk shows, I think it's just kind of, people just realize at the last minute, so. I'm concerned that its traction might be too late from that end of it, so while we're upset, I know that the. The Realtors Association is taking a pretty hot stance on it also.
Yeah, but shame on them for not picking it up before this.
Well, I I think the problem, we were tracking it and we had talked about it at our meeting. We were told it didn't have legs and and correctly, because that bill did not, that bill did not come through. But then it popped up in the budget, correct? So I mean.
It did, and we were on the record with our resolution.
Yes. But it never got hearings, correct? That but that but that bill went to committee or wherever it was and and it it died out, is that correct?
It was heard in committee.
Heard in committee.
Yes, and our resolution was introduced.
Right.
You know, so. But yes, it it didn't have a lot of traction in that moment. It was a surprise to a lot of people, is my understanding, that it did resurface in the budget bill.
Right, but it didn't come out of out of the the Senate. So my point is it resurfaced elsewhere on it, whether it was because of the the strategically, because of the resistance they got. Who knows, but it's it's a problem.
And is am I confusing with something or was the the half that the state was going to take was going to be used for homelessness?
That was on the conveyance.
The conveyance tax, that's right. But this one, I thought this came out, I thought the governor was behind this one.
He he was behind the conveyance. Right, is is that's my that's my recollection and and honestly, for for a couple of weeks, I confused. I I really did. Because I honestly, because I thought the property tax idea was so out there.
The money collected from this one is going where?
That hadn't been decided when I last read, did you? Do you know?
In in the written budget bill, it was towards low income housing, was the phrasing. So not to the communities and with a fairly narrow application at the state level.
So couldn't be used by our municipality to.
It was not returned to the communities in any way.
No. Gone.
So there's some reason why we are not like calling Channel Ten and. Why are we not, where are we not?
The ship is sailed.
I had to listen to that guy from AAA and the guy from the driving school on the news and. I heard them. I think you picked up them.
Right.
Amy, can I? I was, I had gone down, actually fishing with my grandson, and I noticed as I was going with the Coast Guard Station, the side had been reshing the thing. And the building looked great. It was good to see some movement. Can you just give a look, just so people know a little update, because what I saw from the from the street side looked really good.
Thank you for bringing.
Yeah, there's been a a lot of exterior work, so the south wall was. Patched as needed, windows sealed, full paint. Some of the other sides needed some additional attention as well, again, with the emphasis of making sure it's always weather tight. And then we also did interior work, again, just preliminary, not solving all the world's problems yet. But in terms of renovating the kitchen area and the common areas. So making good progress on making sure that is habitable. We did a touch of interior painting on the worst rooms. But we'll go back again now that we don't have structural concerns and we can put this on a separate agenda item more fully. But we don't have structural concerns, so we're going to go ahead and make a work plan for doing the interior floor by floor. So that we're not just putting paint on the wall, but actually doing the necessary repairs in each space to to make it. Functional, livable over the long term.
The exterior really good.
Does.
It does look good.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Well, did I say thank you for your?
One thing, Amy, I know you had about the parking and and Galley's work not well. Do we still have one of our our buses over there?
I don't think so, but I'll double check.
If we did, if we could park that over on that asphalt lot, it'd be much better for the bus and the moisture that comes out of the other lot. If we have the space on that end of it. Will help in the life of it. They might have moved it over here for for Dave, but. I think it's going to help the longevity of it.
All right then. Discuss an act on the appointment of Town Manager Amy Lewis Land. Motion?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, make a motion.
You got it.
No, you make the motion first.
Yeah, well, I wasn't, he, but he kept moving over here. I make emotional point, Amy, as a town manager. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Emphasis on unanimity. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Discuss an act to give advice and consent on the town manager's recommendations. Are we going to hold on Millie? Until she's here, or would you like to just?
I I leave it to the council. We won't be acting on Millie's contract today. She's on vacation, and so I wasn't able to to get that back from her. We can do all together for Millie.
It'd be nice if she was here.
Yeah, I agree. Appoint Mona Helter-Lyn as Finance Director. Can I have a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mona as the Finance Director.
Cause I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have it. Let's see, act to approve unemployment agreements between the town of New Shoreham and. A Amy Lewis Land as Town Manager for a three-year term. We we had two amendments that we've. Agreed to. So can we move it as amended and then post it on court base? Can I have a motion to that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Mona Dwyer Mona Dwyer Helter-Lyn's appointment as contract as Finance Director for a three-year term. Can I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have it. We're holding Millie. Discuss an act on a resolution. Thank you. Thank you. Millie in Italy.
We're we're in a, I feel like we're in a good place.
We really are.
Yeah. Well, you know, and we're grateful for people having stepped up at the time where it was very necessary.
We're going to get a picture of you at the end.
All right, AARP.
So Alison Carly, Director of Human Services, I just want to say two things. The first one is we would not have this initiative without Bridget Price bringing it forward and finding it in the deep, dark depths of the internet. So thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
And Bridget's partner in crime, Sandra Kelly, I would also like to thank because she kind of herded all the cats, for lack of a better word. Got all the fingers behind it and got us to the conclusion of the the five basic needs that we want to work on over the next three to five years. Which is what this commitment would be. And really appreciate the support. I've been sitting in on Westerly's conversations because they're doing the same thing. And I feel like I got a pretty good grasp on how they do it and the framework around it.
So do you want you want us to move?
This.
Your 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 letter in the resolution or just our resolution?
This is a first for me. I took a stab at the resolution. I think a couple of people had to clean it. And I did write the commitment letter, which really, honestly, it opens us up to a lot of grants. To help us with some of the things that we would like to accomplish. And these I do not work in a bubble, so most of these, if not all of them, came from the Senior Advisory Committee.
From a procedural standpoint, if you move the resolution, the resolution includes authorization to send the commitment letter.
There we go.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to move the resolution supporting the age-friendly community status and committing to policies to promote healthy aging.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sandra. Thank you.
I've been contacting some of you for some of these committees.
I know Sandy was recognized. The Sandians is a group of people that have really been at.
Yes.
And they're volunteers and they really do a good job and we appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's talk.
The state.
About DOT.
Let's talk about DOT. So we did have a call last week with DOT and I found that conversation very clarifying. And we'll we'll talk about that.
I'm going to put that in Kate's book Abortionisms, if you don't mind.
Yes. The question in front of us tonight is on the state road agreement itself, and we all generally do agree that the. In terms of day-to-day operations and the maintenance. Of those state roads by the town, that works well. The challenge is on the capital side, which is, from an agreement perspective, almost on the side, a little bit incidental. And in that capital conversation, you really have two pathways. You have the road network and the road network does have a plan going forward. The, what they call the Block Island State of Good Repair is a line item in the draft tips program. So they are proposing twenty million dollars for fiscal year twenty six. And two million dollars a year after that to deal with the roadway infrastructure. Yep.
Is that contingent upon having the funds, like with the building, or is that a guarantee?
Let me tell, let me, let me keep going, because that is still a draft plan. It's in its public hearings right now. But DOT was very confident and comfortable that it would A, remain in the plan. B, remain in the plan as a priority project for them, which is how it is actually labeled, and that the. State funding, which is a required match for that, because it's also federally funded, that the state funding was entirely ready and available. So. Everything with the state is always contingent. They're never not going to have that language in the agreement, but. All signs point to. Those funds continuing to be there, being available and being executable. The timeline for proving that out is between now and October. So they are currently holding public hearings on the draft plan. We are going to be submitting testimony through that public hearing process. We also, Peter Friedrichs from Libra is. By coincidence, in a lot of those meetings for other reasons and is fully briefed on our perspective in case there are any questions or concerns that come up. So we're going to be monitoring that process and the final plan is expected to be approved in October. So we will know then whether or not the plan holds. And then we get to wait and see if they execute. But again, their commitment right now is that those funds are there and that they do plan to move ahead, and it is a top priority. In terms of the roadway network.
What makes this different from, was it two years ago with whoever it was?
I don't have an answer for that. But just hold, so hold that side right there for a little bit, the roadway network, because in a way that's easier. At least they have a plan. When you turn to the facilities, which is the other part of the capital component. This is where I say it was clarifying, because. The response from DOT about what is your plan to deal with this is we don't have a plan. And we're not going to have a plan. It is not within our plan. We don't know what to do. So that was the first time I'd heard that so directly. And it came with a recommendation that if you want this done, New Shoreham should pursue it. From a political and a lobbying perspective to secure a carve-out, funding carve-out. For DOT funds to repair the facility going forward.
So.
So.
I I have a question, so that the roads are in abysmal.
Yes.
Shame. They're like way past the point they were two years ago when we listened to you. Tell us like how crumbly they were. They're they're super crumbly. So the town, according to this agreement. Is just tasked with maintaining, but. Maintaining the crumbly condition, right? Like, we're not, like, the town is not getting themselves into a situation where. The town road crew is expected to. Repair.
The state has everything in terms of.
Correct.
Maintenance and repair on the roads.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because. I mean, the the roads are, I would say, in a in worse condition than that building, and that building, I I wouldn't stand in that building in a big storm.
And so. We talked about some short-term realities. The fact that we are, again, looking at the roadway side, that we are doing roadwork on the town roads, and we've done a great job of that over the last few years. And we didn't hesitate to tell them that. And there are some particular patches that. Mike Shay feels are the worst and cannot go any further without attention. And would DOT be open to funding that work if we executed it alongside the work that we're doing? They're entertaining that. Frankly, seemed a little bit relieved to be able to do something where we were doing, we were doing the heavy lifting. That's a short term.
But that would be outside of this contract, right?
Absolutely, yep.
Money on top of this contract.
Yes. And so. In both of these cases, I think we have. The option of responding in two ways. We can continue to insist that it is their obligation. Make them do the work, legwork, hold them accountable and make them take responsibility. Which means declining to maintain the roads in the meantime. I don't know when or what results. That might elicit. That could take a decade. And I don't know from a practical perspective that we want to actually live through the reality of that. Which leaves us with. The other pathway, particularly on the building, which is to get out there and do the legwork ourselves. To literally pound the pavement, work on our lobbyists, work on our legislators, get other legislators from other communities out here. Show them what we're living with, what we're dealing with, and pursue a a Block Island standalone bill.
So in their current budget, the DOT's budget that they've funded, is there funding in there to do any work on the garage?
No.
And it's too late to be doing anything for this year's budget, now that they've recognized that. But, you know, it. we've never, uh, we've never really gotten any place with the state unless and until we have said, okay, we'll do X, Y and you do Z. And you know, that's the way we've always gotten their interest. So you know, it's a part of me that says, why don't we, why don't we spend some time over the summer, getting a, uh, a fairly inexpensive design for that building? And get, you know, a fairly, fairly decent price for what we, what we need for, for that building without the, you know, apartments above and all the bells and whistles. And then start in on pushing that come January and see where we can go.
I would, I would start even before January. And you know, if we, if we pursue that second path of, of really doing the legwork ourselves, we begin right after the session ends.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And I, I, I think they're probably parallel paths. I mean, I, I think we, I think we have to, our legislators need to step up to the plate on this. Uh, you know, they, they really do. Just as they would if, uh, whatever the, the, that, uh, if the salt shed were, were a municipal, uh, thing, uh, you know, as you, as you head up Route One, if that were, if the corner of that were collapsing, there would be an expectation that legislators, you know, would be stepping up to the plate. Frankly, there would be an expectation, I think, that DOT would step up to the plate. This is very, strikes me as very much an out of sight, out of mind kind of thing. And, um, with, with, uh, with, with due respect, kind of, uh, fairly common, uh, uh, agency cop-out, which is, well, if you can get the legislature to do it, we'd be fine. Well, uh, you know, uh, that, that and, uh, $2 will get me a cup of coffee, you know, I mean, come, come on. But it is where we are.
It is where we are.
Like, I don't, I don't know. You don't, you don't want to cut off your nose to spite your face on stuff like this. So I think we should pursue, my, my opinion, we should pursue parallel paths and I, and I think we need to be really, really frank with our legislators. I think we need to have whatever members of the transportation committee out here for, uh, you know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, our, our legislators really don't have any clout. We've got to start looking around for some of the legislators.
The problem is, this wasn't in, this isn't in their budget.
No.
It's not, oh, it's there and it got caught out. Our problem's with DOT administration itself. And it needs to be, it's one thing to say, hey, listen, we have it in the budget. We need help for you guys to keep it in the budget. But we're, we're looking for something that's not even in their budget.
So it was last year.
Yeah, no, but I mean, yeah, but this year it is.
Yeah.
You know?
Exactly. That wasn't a disagreement. It was like,
Yeah.
I'm wondering whether they felt like they got slapped down and, and someone else's problem.
Um, so I'm just wondering about the term of this contract. 10 years seems like a really long time to tie ourselves to their shoddy roads. Um, is there a way to reduce this? Is there a way to say, we'll do, we'll do this for two years and then, because you're saying the funding that they're talking about isn't going to kick in for another couple of years anyway, right?
So this comes with, what, $500,000 yearly?
For maintenance.
For maintenance, yeah.
And so that is a
We don't want to toss that out.
That is a concern.
Do we want to tie ourselves to 10 years?
Absolutely. Why not? We're not gonna
Well.
Because, I mean,
we're not going to turn this, turn the road operation back to the state. You know, the best part of this whole thing is that, you know, we, there's a portion of this that we do ourselves and we have our own highway department.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah.
I think it's a yes and or no and, um, in that the, the town did in its negotiations over this agreement, try to put a different term on the table in order to drive a more effective performance. That was, I wasn't in the room, but it wasn't, didn't materialize. There were almost no substantive changes to the agreement itself that the town was able to negotiate. What we did talk about when we discussed this last was the town's ability to give 12 months' notice about terminating the agreement. So what I would recommend that we do today is, is a third pathway, third concurrent pathway to authorize the execution of the agreement as drafted, which is a 10-year term.
And then put in our notice?
And submit a letter indicating that absent meaningful performance towards capital, both the roadway network and the facility, the town would intend to terminate the agreement July 1 of 2026. So it's an intention to terminate unless they are able to demonstrate progress. Um, so that we've put them on soft notice, meaning we can execute that if we need to. If we get to October and our 20 million isn't in the final tips plan, that's a problem. And we'll know that long before July 1 of next year. But we've still put our 12 months' notice in. If by the end of, or halfway through the legislative session, we're not seeing any traction on the work that we may do on our own behalf to get DOT funding for our facility, again, we have that mechanism already in place. And so we're, we have the agreement that codifies the standards that we're all working under. We're securing the $500,000, which we haven't received for this year because we don't have an agreement in place. We've put them on notice and then we go out and try to solve the problem ourselves.
But A, we want to make sure that in the DOT budget for next year, that $500,000 is, is in there somehow and they don't take the position, well, we won't put it in because you've given us notice that, you know, that you're pulling out as of July 1. I mean, it, it doesn't really have a downside.
In particular, the, the state couldn't possibly maintain a road crew out here and for half a million dollars. That there's no way they could.
No, but they could do nothing.
Do not, yeah. The question is, is that, is that going to faze them, you know?
So they, they're already doing nothing. So what?
So at least with the agreement in place, we have some ability to maintain things to our own standards.
Right.
And believe me, there's a, there is a, a school of thought that says we do nothing and let it all fail and they be held accountable. We have to live through it.
My immediate reaction is just that, you know, hey, let's, you know, take our bat and go, but the reality of it is, we're cutting our nose off just by our own face. We have something that no other town does that actually does work. If it wasn't for the garage and the salt shed thing, it works, you know, and I think it works to our advantage. We have better control and so forth. So I think that, that avenue, I like what you're saying, going from there, but I think, I think the pressure on, on the building is, if it comes to the point where we need to bring, I mean, DOT does not need any more bad press, okay? And the thing is, I think we need to have a sit-down with the council, whereas with them, say, look, we don't want to go public on this, but we're getting to the point where our employees are being put in jeopardy. And I think we do have to deal with separate, because I don't want to see our bluff fall because they're, they're blow moves so low, next thing you know, we don't have them to take care of the roads.
I mean, we, we prepared them for that, that if there is a concern for the safety of our employees, we will not operate out of that facility in, any longer. And that doesn't become their call, you know?
Is there any advantage, and this is, is there any advantage to them turn the facility over to us?
I think as we develop a strategic plan over the next few months about how we're going to talk about this more broadly, that becomes an element. Yes.
I think, yeah, there, there has been a time where they, they would love to do that. But then, you know, we're in the same boat
Right.
as we are right now. Do we do it ourselves? Or do we push them?
And in this case, we're not, we're not suggesting that we foot the bill. We're doing the legwork. And we're not going as far as to pay for it.
But at some point in time, I mean, the reality is going to be if we're going to be concerned about our, you know, the people that work there. You know, we may in fact have to just push the button and say, screw this, well, we're going to build it. You're going to get the bill. We recognize that it's probably going to be eons before you ever pay it, but there it is.
Amy, I think you've laid out a rationale construct here.
Good luck.
I, I'd be happy to complain for the next half hour, but, um, uh, can, do you need a motion from us?
I do.
Okay.
I would like the council to authorize the execution of the, um, memorandum of agreement with the state of Rhode Island.
And does that include the lease?
It does include the lease. They're going to send an amended lease once they get through state brackets.
Like, would you like that motion to include, um, asking you to include a letter, contemplating, you know, saying that we are contemplating if things.
Contemplating executing our 12 months' notice. Yes.
So this sort of agreement, well, Len's going to give us a year notice to opt out, correct?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second?
All, all those in favor?
No, I have a question. So, so in that agreement, there's an escalation, correct, for the, for the, the half million dollars as it goes?
No, there is not.
So it's a half million dollars?
For 10 years.
And you're comfortable with that?
It's what's been negotiated and there's no renegotiating.
Who did this negotiation? Was it before you or?
Yes. Yep.
Why is there no renegotiation? Nothing's been signed?
The door, yeah, the door is not open there.
My point is if you're not comfortable with this, with what is through there and we haven't signed it, then it isn't, you know, I mean, I'm okay with, with doing this, but I want to make sure you're comfortable with it because you're the persons that are going to be dealing with it, you know, on the front line for the next, hopefully 10 years.
My observation of the, this agreement as opposed to the one before it is that there were almost no substantive changes. I think our, one of our very first meetings, we went through the things that Mary Ann had asked for, none of which she was able to secure and it wasn't for lack of trying. She had a very comprehensive approach to trying to align the town's interests, align the agreement with the town's interests in a better way and she was not successful and I don't know that I could do any better. She was able to change the amount. That's essentially it.
So you're comfortable with the amount? That's the bottom line?
I think that's the, that's, I think the dollar amount covers our expenses. Yes. That, that's important and that's appropriate. Yes, I'd love to have it, have an escalation clause, but, um, the last agreement didn't. It was only the very first 10-year agreement that had an escalator.
And we can opt out on this is, is, with the, we're doing it with, is it only contingent about the building or we do have a way to opt out of it?
No, we have a way to opt out, giving 12 months' notice.
Okay, for any reason.
For any reason.
So, you know, four or five years down, if, you know, this amount is not nearly enough, we pull that line again and see what happens.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion or questions?
That's clear.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have it. Mona, it's deja vu all over again.
Yes. So as you know, the, um, the warrant empowers the council to authorize over expenditures and certain, uh, certain appropriations and so what we have here is a summary of where I expect those over expenditures to occur. Some notes about kind of what the main driving force is of that over expenditure and then also, uh, where I think we'll balance out. I don't think we'll have a problem balancing out. So do you want me to go through it line by line? Do you just want to ask questions? What do you prefer?
I'd have you go through it line by line.
Okay.
Please.
All right, so, um, basically when I looked at projected numbers for administration, it was, it was very clear that that is already, um, exceeding the budget there for the wages town manager and that's absolutely uh, just directly tied to that severance. As you see, I, I believe that the department as a whole will be over by 90,000. The severance was 96, so we've got some other lines that are underspent that are helping offset that on a department level. The recreation, uh, we've got the wages and payroll taxes all really related to Fred Benson Beach. That goes back to the, um, the fact that they're open longer later. So we're going to have the wages. Also there were, um, you know, wage increases last year to try to attract the talent that we needed to attract.
We contemplated this in the new recreation budget, the extended hours.
Yeah, a, as well as, uh, the other items, Fred Benson Beach expense.
Yes, right, right.
And Heinz Field Maintenance, both of those we knew, um, were going to be over and now so we, we hope that we've, uh, budgeted appropriately for them.
I was reminding myself out loud.
So I expect that'll be over about 50,000. I'd love to be surprised when it's less. I don't know. GIS Technology, it's another one we kind of looked at at the budget and we increased those lines. And we, as, just like, uh, with this, the new system that Paul's getting from the police department, we just have more and more technology coming online. With that becomes those subscriptions.
Yeah.
There's more protections or security that we've, we've had to put in place, uh, just to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we are protected. And so all of that incurs a cost, obviously, and that's, that's what we're seeing here.
So it's not people, that's largely, uh, hardware and software?
Yes, and so the consultant technology line, uh, is going to be mainly just your recurring monthly fees for our consultants. Yeah. Um, and then, yeah, license and maintenance really was a big
Great.
A, a big driver there. So a, again, I, I only see that going over by 25,000. The big, the big one was administration. That's really where that. Um, I, there's going to be savings in finance from both the, uh, Finance Director Wages and Deputy Finance Director. So I anticipate we'll end up with a surplus of about 60,000. On the human services side, uh, the senior coordinator. I believe when the budget was originally developed, I don't know if we had a, I think we might've had a different plan in place or something, uh, for staff. And so what's, what's happening now is, um, helping, you know, alleviate some of the use of those budgeted funds. And that also benefits when, when it was originally budgeted for, uh, we had a different mix of employees and they were taking more benefits, so. Uh, and then programming, as you can see, it's, it is under spent. I should probably be changing the lines briefly, maybe that'd be helpful.
I was just looking for the overview on it.
Okay.
It's more from my understanding of it, not a question of.
All right, well, if you have any, just let me know, of course. Uh, and, and then police, I expect to have, uh, overage. Uh, we've got some wages that aren't going to be spent. That would be, uh, the seasonal reserves. I'm just projecting out what we've used now. You know, adding in what we expect to see for June. And so I do see that we're going to be over particularly on the CSO line and then the, uh, the police other line.
And this is something we do annually where we
Yeah.
miss the target.
Yeah, it's, it's a something that
Saying that because people are watching.
Yeah. Yes, and then the accreditation, I don't expect that we're going to use all that, but so.
And, and we lowered that for this year also.
Yes, and so we've more than offset the, you know, the over expenditures.
So you need a motion from us to authorize the over expenditures, uh, not exceeding the 2025 budget?
So moved.
Is there discussion? Questions, et cetera? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose no, the ayes have it. Uh, assignment of 2025 capital and operating funds for use in 2026?
Right, so this, um, relates to our encumbrances that we've assigned over the years. Um, establishes, uh, what we're going to extinguish, what we're adding from this, what we expect to add from this fiscal year 25 budget. More often than not, it's capital lines. And then, uh, anything we want to carry forward. And so what we're adding this year are expended funds related to, uh, town beach. Now, like I said, the financials are in flux and changing. Since then, we've, we've even, um, I've seen some invoices that we'll be able to apply to that. So it's, we can authorize it at this amount, that's fine. Things will be evolving, but, um, yeah, so.
Mona, just, just, I'm not familiar with this. So this basically is like, we have this remaining, we want to carry it to next year?
There are certain cases, yes, when we can There are certain cases, yes, when we can carry it over and it's usually projects and capital improvements, is that correct?
Yes, and the other key part is that as long as that carry forward doesn't over expend the budget in aggregate. So just because you didn't spend it, but maybe you spent something else over, if, if that leaves you in the negative, you can't hold funds. It has to also work in the, in the aggregate. And you can't, you can't over expend the budget in total. So there are sometimes instances where the council will authorize this, but as we're closing out the books, we actually can't hold on to an encumbrance because that would create an over expenditure that's not
You mean of the whole budget?
Yeah.
So no, you spend the entire budget, this is left, this can't
This doesn't happen.
Okay, gotcha. It has to be used towards
Yes, it has to be used exactly as originally specified.
There was a project originally, a capital project put in place or budgeted for, for the hospitality center. We're interstate, I'm just getting caught up on this this particular capital improvement, but I guess the interstate was going to tear down. You have the hospitality center and we were going to have to, we would have to then furnish and
That's what we were preparing for. That is still on the timeline, but not in time for 25 expenditures.
And then we have the library HVAC, which hasn't been addressed yet, so we're requesting to carry that over. We've, and we have our renewals below. Those are items that had been you know, approved and carried over from prior years, net of what has been applied from the current fiscal year.
So on the generator, can you explain what that is? I just
There's, so there were encumbrances back of 2015, fiscal year 17 and 18 for generator overhauls. Would that be the right way to term it?
It was for a combination of redeployments of generators.
When we took, I think, from the police down to the coast guard?
Which ultimately was disposed of. I believe there is still one more in the, in the mix, which is why I'd like to hold on to this because I don't have a status of that last project. If there is nothing left to do there, we will release it next year, but if there's additional work.
So if, for instance, just if we took the, the generator from, just say, the medical center?
The old medical center.
Be able to use these funds to make it active?
Say, redeploy it at the transfer station. And I, I think there might be one more step that's available.
It's one or two.
I thought one was going to the town dump.
It appeared where every meeting was about generators.
Yes. I, I will say that we did finally use some of this money to reconnect the rescue building to the generator just within the last six months. So it, it does eventually get done.
Okay, good to hear. So I guess I'll make a motion to a, a, assign the capital and operating funds for use in 2026 and renew the prior year's unexpended assignments and release expired assignments.
Is there a second?
And I have one question on the, on the motor pool 180, right? That's the work that you'd be doing on the motor pool itself, correct? So whether it's shingling, what is whatever?
Yep.
Great.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Landing fees?
Landing fees, yep. We're down to the easy ones now. So the amount that we are requesting or your authorization of is 171,114 dollars and 80 cents, which is what was collected for calendar year 2023.
Make a motion and move that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
And finally, we've just got the requests to write off taxes that are, have been delinquent for at least 10 years. Oh, for at least 10 years, that would be 2015. And that would be a total of $945.55.
So can I ask a question? Am I the only person who, when I get, when you get a list like this, I look, make sure that I don't owe?
You know, yeah, when you get down to the $2 and even you know, did I write the right check?
We'll make a motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. That's my Irish Catholic guilt. Mona, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that was the first time you've had to walk us through those four and you did an admirable job.
Oh, thank you.
Because it's it ain't easy.
Together.
All right. Anything else, future agendas, et cetera? Go ahead.
So I don't know how to describe it, but there were a, a property acquisition that we have had sitting around here, you need to get that back on the agenda?
Yep.
And i- is there or has there been a Transportation Committee meeting or whatever that was?
There has not been entirely because of Keith J. Stover not focusing on it, truthfully.
Because I think the, the memo that we got from Nick may be the prod for you, you folks to take a look at that and bring something
Indeed.
To us.
Indeed.
I, I'd like to see us put the we got a nice memo from Nick explaining about slow-moving vehicles. I'd like for us to, and I think that's, that's a great base, but the, the big question I think we have is can they be used as rental vehicles? And I think we should put that on the agenda to determine because as, as it is now, it appears that they are.
Yes.
And
That's a good question.
Yes, we could put that on, we could kind of
Yeah.
And I don't know that it's going to be a one-meeting answer, but just so that we can get that clarified.
And then can you take
We don't pay attention to it. Tristan pointed this out earlier last meeting or a couple of meetings ago. You know, we, we could be in the soup again.
Right.
You know, trying to play catch up, so.
And, and Nick's memo, I think, is just a good foundation from there. So I think we, we can get the next legal question about, on the rental aspect of it. And my main concern is the operation, like, that's the reason.
Yeah.
And we had a, we had a letter today from Leo, Leonie. Can we just pass that on to Paul for some comment?
I forward it to Amy, Paul and Millie, who would be the because some of the questions involved what was license, what was licensed activity on a particular location?
In plus
Millie and, you know, so anyway, I probably should have included Jen too, but I have a motion to adjourn. Second, all, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.